I know.
Call the meeting door to the Georgetown City Council, could you please rise for a moment of silence and then Ms. Tinglestane will lead us in pledge.
Shall we pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am.
You're welcome.
Now, the clerk, would you call the robe?
Mr. Lusby? Mr. McEwen? Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestane?
Here.
Mr. Showalter? Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
By no large.
Okay, next item of business is approval of minutes of our last meeting on June 10th. Any question about the minutes? Motion for approval, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Show hands that you did receive your check register. Thank you. Alright, we have a couple items on public comments, four minutes. We have represented some Penn Avenue Baptists. Welcome.
My name's Steve Smith and new pastor at Penn Avenue, it's good being in Georgetown.
Welcome.
And we're planning a vacation Bible school for August the 8th through the 12th and we're planning to have a carnival for the neighborhood kids on the 13th and we're hoping to block off the street between Robinson Avenue and Oak Street on Saturday afternoon from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM and we need approval from the council to do that.
So moved there, that's fine, I have all this.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Have a great one.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
We gotta go.
Well, you got what you came after, that's all that matters.
That may be the smartest man in the room right there.
Okay, Ms. Cloud? Georgetown Main Street?
Good evening, I'm here to give a kind of an updated report on the Georgetown Main Street process.
And I'm here to back her up.
In this, in this room, you probably need it, ma'am.
Yeah, probably. I'm Amelia Cloud, for those of you that don't know me, I'm the incoming president of the board and Gretchen is currently our secretary and she will be continuing as such, but I just wanted to catch you all up, we've been so busy having special meetings and regular meetings and so on that we've been a little negligent in coming back to report to you. The last conversation was back in April and then we sent a letter telling you what we were planning on doing on April 22nd. So it's been a little while, today's the June 24th, but we have worked very hard to develop, kind of rethink our mission statement and vision statement, we've also decided to rename this group Georgetown Main Street rather than Historic Georgetown because that's always the tagline, when you say Historic Georgetown Inc., people kind of look at you if they're not familiar with it, so we always say Georgetown Main Street, so it'll, it'll be now Georgetown Main Street. We have worked on a job description very diligently, we've worked on some new goals for the organization, planning for the new year that starts July 1st, we submitted our job description online, it's gone to the listserv for the National Historic Trust Kentucky, excuse me, Kentucky Heritage Council and then U of L and UK's schools of masters programs as well as in the Georgetown newspaper. As of last Friday, when we had our meeting, we had nine resumes in, I got one more in the mail today. And now we have lots more, okay, well, we have lots more. Okay, and at least half of them are from out of state, so there are lots of people interested in this position. The closing is this Wednesday and we'll be discussing and weeding through some of the applications on Thursday at noon time, going through and coming up with a main list of folks that we think are really going to be good candidates to interview. So that's where we are in the process and we really do appreciate your support financially and just the backing of this, of this council because this is such an important part of Georgetown, people look forward to what we're doing and now that we're getting close, we're getting lots of questions from the public, people are very interested. So I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any need of clarification on anything.
Is there a target date to have someone hired?
We originally had thought it would be July 1st, but we know that's not going to happen at this point because things got pushed back a little bit, certainly by August 1st, Brad.
Okay, and there was, I think when y'all were here before, there was a, was that a 90-day period that, that was the buffer there before you had?
Approval, right, and the letter was written to the Heritage Council and they gave us the extra time and I had originally written the letter to say that we would have someone in place by July 1st, but I've already been approved to have that go an extra 30 days to make sure that we are on track and get the right person in place. Well, thanks very much for your support, we hope to see you at the Taste of Georgetown, our sixth annual this Thursday from 5 to 8, so. You're in better than ever.
Alright.
Picture of the city hall on the wine.
That's true, yeah, we're doing the wine, we are doing the wine glasses a little differently this year, you remember we've done hand painted glasses, this year seems to be the year of city hall because we had the plaque designated for the Bluegrass Historic Trust after Sir Johnson painted outside, so we decided to feature that historic building this year and every year we'll do a different historic building. So something a little different.
Got it all in. Okay, next is my section, first we have a proclamation, Purple Heart.
Since our nation's earliest days, America's been blessed with an unbroken chain of patriots who have served our country with honor and distinction, the city of Georgetown has great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and our community to the armed forces. Veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, our debt to them is one we can never fully repay, but we can honor their sacrifice and strive to be cities equal to their example. Scripture teaches us that the greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends. Today, we pay tribute to those patriots who never came back, who fought for a home to which they never returned and died for a country whose gratitude they will always have. Now therefore, I Everett Barney, Mayor of Georgetown Kentucky hereby proclaim on this day Georgetown Kentucky as a Purple Heart City and urge all citizens to honor the service and sacrifice of our many men and women in uniform that have given their lives or were wounded while serving in the armed forces.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, next, have an appointment to the Georgetown Housing Authority, we had a resignation, Ms. Scott Bruins and we really appreciate his dedication, he served as chairperson for a couple terms. He served his last meeting last week, so, and we were very fortunate to be able to appoint Mr. James Earhart. I sent you out a resume on Jim, is who I know him as, and like to have approval of Jim's appointment to the Housing Authority Board, he finished out Scott's term and then he'll have two more terms available to him if he so desires.
Effective immediately, Mr. James E. Earhart is appointed to the Georgetown Housing Authority Board for the first full term which expires December 31st, 2017.
Motion there.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you very much.
I abstain from the record.
Okay. EMS Legacy Program and Scholarships. Got David Sloan here to report to us.
Purpose of introduction, we started this program, I guess we're going on the fifth year this year. And with the support of council and the court, we decided to create a program to, not really job shadow, but to let some youth come in and see how we do our jobs, to get on the ambulances and ride along and be involved in how we do our program at Georgetown Scott County EMS. We named it the Legacy Program and I'll let David elaborate that a little bit, but David Monarch has a couple of this year's students with him, he's our coordinator and they do have the presentation for council tonight, so I just wanted to thank you all for the support of this program. And actually, we've got a young man coming back in a couple weeks to interview that was in one of the first classes with us, so it's hopefully doing what it's designed to do is bring folks back to our profession.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, my name is, my name is David Monarch, I'm a paramedic at Georgetown Scott County EMS. I just got recently involved with the, with the Legacy Program about two years ago, this year I've been full-time with them, I want to say that we've had like 30 students that have gone through the program since its inception in 2009, we have one student, as Dave said, that was our first scholarship winner in 2009, he's coming back, he's completed his EMT training and he wants to work in Georgetown, work on the ambulances, which is the main reason that this program was started in the first place, we want to bring people back to Georgetown, get them to work here and work for the community that they live in. We've had a great turnover, we've had people coming in begging us to be part of this program and I'm happy to say that this year we have eight new students that are going to be riding in 2013, 2014. We have four returning juniors from last year that are going to complete our contingent. These students get on the truck with us, they do almost everything that an EMT can do, but they don't. They know how to do everything, we train them how to do everything so that they can assist us further and these kids have gone way beyond what we ever expected them to do, their dedication, their commitment, the time away from their families, they're coming in riding on their Saturdays and Sundays when they could be at the pool, they could be dating, they could be watching TV, they could be playing video games, but they're instead, they're there with us, they're riding on the trucks and they're helping out tremendously. Our crews look forward to these kids coming in, I misspoke, these are not kids anymore, these are young adults and they have by far exceeded our expectations, but they're riding on the trucks, they're doing everything with us and when we come in, we see we've got a legacy student ride with us, we don't have a two-man truck anymore, we've got a three-man team and that means better patient care, that means more expedited care. And the people of Georgetown that have been in contact with these students as patients, they have expressed nothing but thanks and admiration to these people for putting forth their time and effort and their dedication to this program. And I would like to introduce a couple of the students from this year, we have Madison Everly, who is a junior who will be returning with us to finish out her senior year next year, and Kayla Smith, who is also a junior, they will be our first returning students, they will get a two-year shot at this program instead of just a one-year shot as a senior. I want them to tell you a little bit about what they've done, what the program's meant to them and they have a little presentation for you and things.
Hi, like David said, I'm Madison Everly, this program has changed how I see the medical field and it has made me want to go on to EKU and be a paramedic and pursue, pursue it as a career and come back to Georgetown and work. I have been on several, several car accidents and cardiac arrests and every time I get on a truck, it, I love being able to help people and knowing I'm making a difference in the community and being able to put patient care.
Hi, I'm Kayla Smith and as David said, I'm a returning student, with the Legacy Program, I really feel that my social skills have developed even further, I feel as if I'm more prepared for going into my future jobs. With this program, I've been able, well allowed, to do an EMT class starting in August, so I'll actually be able to become an EMT and I can do that as a job and if I feel like it, I can become a paramedic or, as I would like to become, a doctor and this program has truly showed me the entire medical field, so I am insured that it's exactly what I want to do when I grow up. I've seen just about everything, so if I, if I couldn't handle it, I'd probably know by now, but it's completely opened my eyes to the community and everyone around me and it's, it's a joy to be able to help everyone.
We'd like to present you with a plaque and a certificate for the continued dedication and support of the Legacy Program.
I'd like to mention another thing, then I'll wrap it up here. For many years now, we've been attempting to do something and this year we finally completed our, our goal. These kids got together and they wrote an article talking about the Legacy Program and the ambulance service and what this program means to them, we actually had it published internationally in EMS World Magazine and it was published online so that everybody across the world can see what this program is doing and the fact that it started here in Georgetown and right now, it is the only program in the United States of its kind because there are lots of ride-along programs out there where the kids get to go on and see what's going on, this is the only one where they actually get to participate and they've done a magnificent job and when we contacted EMS World about it, they fell over backwards wanting to know more about this program. So they wrote the article up, it's been published and it's available at emsworld.com and it is getting lots of hits. We've actually gotten calls about the program since it's gone online. They deserve all the credit.
These young ladies are a sample of what you're able to work with, I have no doubt we're going to have a tremendous successful program and being first is great, we like to be that way.
Absolutely. If these two are any indication of what's coming back to take care of Georgetown, you're set. You're in good shape.
Thank you, young ladies, for being here and thank you so much for what you do, really appreciate you and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Mayor Castle, good evening. I'm here today to talk about, give you really a public works update and it's really going to be public works and sanitation, did everybody get the emails that, that were sent out regarding my department in this meeting, please? Because if not, I do have a couple extra copies and, and the first one that came out, yes, sir. You okay?
Yeah.
Good deal. Which one do you have here, Council?
June 18th, 2013, deficiencies for refuse collection.
Okay, that's the one I want to look at first, good. And, and that's the one that I wanted to really personal, you know, congratulate the leadership team, which is, which is you sitting up there and, and also the mayor for purchasing the automated truck, I think that was one of the better decisions that, that could be made for the city of Georgetown. As I said, you know, we had goals of reducing injury rates out there for back injuries, we achieved those goals, we had the goals of reducing our manpower, we achieved those goals also and I noticed in a meeting a couple, couple meters ago, that I believe it was Councilman Lusby there that was inquiring about, can we even go farther, the automated truck was purchased to operate with one operator and he's right and I agree with that 100%, but it cannot be done without council supporting the trash ordinance that, that we have out there and I've had the city attorney to take a look at it and, and he agreed also, we drafted up some notices that, that I'm proposing to send out, you know, and be advertised on the news and the website, but it's, it's going to take this body here to support that because I, I probably will call you and, and what I'm proposing is, so let's go ahead and implement it and probably starting around July 22nd, second week after the holiday, is first to implement this and, and what I'm saying is that any trash that's not inside your container, we're going to have to leave it or as, as Andrew suggested, don't leave it, go ahead and continue to pick it up, but issue non-compliance notices and once we get to say a third compliance notice, which, which would be considered a fifth notice there, we can say, okay, now we're going to fine you $25 and, and that will be assigned to your water bill and if you don't pay it, your water, your water can be shut off and that's the, that's the teeth you got to have in this system because if you just go out there and say that I'm not gonna, I'm not going to pick you up and don't pick them up, they don't care, they'd get blown across the neighbors' yards, you know, when there's a windstorm or something out there and if you threaten them and say, well, I'm going to fine you or access you $25 especially collection fee or whatever, well, go ahead and do it, you can collect your money when I sell my property, put a lien on my property, that can take another 50 years, 100 years, depends on the, on the family structure of your property. So I do ask some examples here that we can, you know, we can go by and, and I hope, really hope that, that you as a body would, would take a look at this and take, take serious notice on it, this is the one that Andrew has suggested and I disagree with him on this, it's a system that we already have in place, it's a two-tagged system. This system that's in place now, it's a two-tagged system, which we will legal. Now, take a look at these and pass these around too. Now, we already have this system in place now, what, what this does, we, we write out a non-compliance system and we will, we will leave it the hard copy with the residents at their home and we bring this particular copy here back to our office and file it. It do have the address of the residents on there, it has the driver name and it has the unit number there and what I did is revise this particular form that we currently have now, you see it highlighted in yellow, that would tell you that now you got a final notice.
Terry, how did you arrive at $25 per day? Or is it, if there were repeat offenders and could use a 65 gallon or another 95 gallon Herbie, why not assess the cost of?
A Herbie? This body can do that, I, I feel personally that's, that's a little steep to, to access you an additional $25 for me picking up your trash that's not in the containers, but if this body want to do that, that's fine, but I'm willing to sell some extra containers out there, I do have some used containers that I can sell for $25 each and the new ones we have out there, we have to sell, you know, those for a 64 and the 65 for 50.
$4.
This is the type of issues that's really hurting us, if you did not have these type of issues here, you could flow through this system and really have a dynamic system here in Georgetown.
Terry, how did we come about used containers?
Used containers are the ones that we've loaned out over the years to different, different groups here within the city. Festive the horse and Warthall or different areas like that.
Terry's had several pictures of this type, you can see right here, this person needs to be certainly encouraged to visit our recycling center, all that cardboard can certainly be used out there.
And, and that's what we are suggesting, I was in wanting to notice is there, go ahead and drop your cardboard off at the recycle center. I know, I know Councilman Kelly was talking to me today about that, you know, he's concerned about the production at the recycle center, this would help increase the production.
But you can see what a problem this presents for one man on the truck, I mean, it can't be done.
It seems like, I mean, there, to me, there's a lot of kind of issues going on here because even the notice is a little bit out of date, there's, for example, one of the other violations would be personal trash cans with sharp edges or holes, holes should be replaced and may be considered refuge, well, we don't use personal trash cans anymore, we just use the Herbies.
We still use them somewhat, allow them to be used, but, but I'm recommending once we issue out the new, or once we do the revisions here, we can eliminate that mark, you're absolutely correct.
I mean, and broken bags and scattered trash happen before collectors arrive, I mean, that's, there shouldn't be any problem with broken bags because it's all in the Kirby, it should all be all contained in the Kirby. And then, another question I have, and I guess it's just since we've had the gripper truck, you know, the, the truck with the orange arm, you know, back in the day before the gripper truck, we, you know, people would cut, would have to cut their limbs to four-foot lengths and bundle them, it seems like with the gripper truck, that, you know, that I've seen piles go out to the curb of, of lots of limbs of heavy vegetation not sawed down in those four-foot lengths and certainly not bundled and the gripper truck comes and picks them up pretty easily, I mean, is that, is that even something that should still can be, still be in the ordinance or, or requirement?
I, I think with the gripper truck, we could probably relax that particular rule there and allow the limbs and brushes to be somewhat longer because that's, that's what it was purchased for, so I, I got no problem relaxing that particular one there, when you was asking for four feet, cut, be cut in length of four feet and not weighed in more than 50 pounds, that's when you had operators actually picking it up and manhandling it.
Man, that's helped a lot with people just being able to, it's encouraged people to actually go out and kind of cut on their yard some in, in terms of some of the trees and some of the stuff they've put off simply because they can, they know they can just easily take to the curb and have the gripper pick it up.
I left it, I left it in the ordinance now, if we want to continue and say, okay, let's cut it up and leave it at four feet, we can do that, again, that's up to the body here, I will support and enforce anything that this body approves.
It seems like it's almost needs to be like an omnibus, sort of changes to the sanitation ordinance, a lot of it's unclear right now, I think from council, what we want to do to try to get us to the point where we can, on a practical level, rely on people putting their garbage in the Kirby's and being able to use the one-man trucks. So I, we haven't had, I'm on the Public Works Committee, Committee, but I don't think we've had a meeting yet and this probably is something that we can work on within the Public Works Committee as far as coming up with an ordinance. Because, I mean, it's, that many changes need to take place.
Do we have, do we have a rate schedule of some type for the gripper truck itself? When it's, when it's scheduled, when it's called, I mean, I've, I've used it and paid, paid for its use and, you know, you can, you can set out 19 piles of trash and, I mean, and that person that operates that for us will come by and take care of that.
We do.
If you pay the bill, but, you know, what, how, how does that, how does that rate structure or, or, or set of rules for the gripper truck, for example, either enhance what we do with sanitation or, or inhibit? either enhance what we do with sanitation or inhibit it in either way? Because on one hand, you know, and you know, I've constantly said that it either, we either have to get the public to participate in what we're doing with sanitation and use the Herbies as the design has been for the last few years and so that we can go to one man on the truck in the neighborhoods that can use that. Or we'll just pick up whatever you set out. I mean, it's sort of all or nothing. The gripper truck allows us to do, to do both in some circumstances and in special occasions when it's scheduled or when, you know, your staff knows that's coming at a particular residence or business. So what do we do with it?
We do have a rate schedule and the special collection section of the ordinance do allow at the expression of the director to go out and look at a particular pile of special collection reference, if you want to use that term there. And I can apply a cost to it, a break also can. So we, we do charge for picking up special collections and we're making pretty good on that too. I think states can attest to that. So we're doing some things that we never did in a sanitation department before, for us bringing in revenues, you know. And this year is what we go by now. We have certain prices for the chair or couch, mattress and different things like that. When it comes to set outs, then we have to go out and take a look at that and assess the price there. But it's not free. Anything that we pick up free for you is going to be what's in the ordinance that allows that.
Terry, the pictures that you gave us, are those not special pickups?
Those particular ones there?
Yeah. The pictures that you gave us, are these special pickups?
How they handled?
And assessed an additional fee or currently?
They have not been.
Okay.
Now, if there's a couch or mattress or other items that's sitting with that, then that's considered a special collection fee. But, you know, for the last, I guess, 10, 12 years, those type of items there have been allowed in the ordinance to be picked up as trash. So now we are slowly revolving and saying, okay, now let's go back and follow the rules. And try to make it right. And I think Andrew, when you looked at it, did you see any particular revisions that we needed to make except what we're doing tonight?
Well, you certainly can't do any kind of thing related to a fee without a revision. But, I mean, the ordinance speaks it to me in terms of what can go in the garbage and, or, I'm sorry, what, the fact that it needs to go in the garbage and not be picked up. There's not a whole lot of specificity as to special pickups. I think we've chosen to handle that more of as an administrative matter.
And I would also say that, you know, if there's an overarching goal to making it more efficient, to getting the one-man trucks, two- or one-man trucks. And I think, you know, the, we need to make the goal of trying to, you know, run it as cheaply and efficiently as possible with, you know, perhaps even looking at cutting the garbage fee down the line. If we start running such a surplus, if the cost, if the actual cost of providing the service goes down and we're still asking people to pay $15 a month. I mean, the goal should be trying to save the taxpayers or the ratepayers some money and maybe even getting it down to $14 or $13 a month. I mean, I don't want to just do this to run a surplus over in sanitation so that we can transfer the money over to the general or stockpile money in sanitation over time.
I think you should run the automated truck with one operator because that's the way it was designed. And we purchased it for that purpose. And if you start getting into additional surplus, the only way that you're going to continue to help the taxpayers out there is by using that surplus to buy an additional truck and apply it to recycle and go out and start doing curbside. So now you're providing a service that the taxpayers want.
So either enhance it or let the, if there's a cost drop, either give them a rebate in the form of a lower rate or enhance the service by going to curbside recycling throughout the city. Or do both, or try to, you know.
You need to do both and you need to operate the truck the way, number one, is let's operate the truck the way it was designed to operate. And council, and we can talk about how you want to use the surplus.
This citizen A on this picture, from what you can tell by the picture, if you had the recycling, then he would not be out of compliance because he would be able to have all this trash in there and the rest of that looks like it's basically recycling. This one might be a different story, but this one, you could do the excess for recycling, then he doesn't have, this citizen doesn't have a problem.
Right.
I think, Terry, the issue that I have, and you and I have discussed this, we do need to get to one man on that truck. The issue that I have is much, I think, what Mark is discussing in that we raise the garbage rates to accommodate the Herbie system. But now, and at that point, we, this was an everyday occurrence, unfortunately. You know, we, so we told our taxpayers, now you can only take, you know, you can't take all of the garbage that you used to put out. You've got a 96-gallon container. And we did that in, all in the same time of raising the rates. And the issue that I have, and I'm not sure that there's necessarily a good compromise, is now we're going to go back and we're going to say, we're going to maintain that rate. But now we're going to decrease the level of service that we're able to provide you. And we're not going to pick up everything that you have on the streets. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure that there's a, that there's a perfect solution to that. Obviously, we've got to get to the one-man on truck. I know that's why we bought the automated truck and implemented the Herbie program. But I hate to now go back to the public and say, we're not going to pick up as much trash for you as we've been picking up. And we're going to maintain that same rate. You see where I'm coming from?
You can buy them an additional container, just give it to them.
Well, and that's kind of what I think Kelly might have been on to something there, and I think you and I have talked about that as well. You know, if that can be worked into the fee and drop another container off, then it starts to make a little more sense to me. Because you're actually receiving something for that, for that assessment that will benefit you guys down the line and ultimately it'll benefit the homeowner as well.
I mean, I don't blame the guy in picture A or necessarily even the guy in picture B. I mean, I don't know if the guy in picture A with the cardboard is maybe just moved, maybe bought some stuff, I don't know, or cleaning out. But I think the point I'd make is there's nothing wrong with what he did, per se, you know, in general. It's just, we've got to figure out a way to design the service, either by providing curbside recycling to take care of this, take care of this extra cardboard and pick that up for him. Or like what Brad and Kelly are talking about, giving them an extra Kirby so that we can accommodate his needs. And he has, doesn't have to do a lot of thinking, you know, do I throw this away this week? I have this much room in my Kirby. What do I have to keep in the garage this week and what do I throw away? I don't want him to have to think about that.
Technically, don't forget, that is technically a violation.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I know it's a violation of the ordinance. I'm just saying that I think our, I think the direction I'd want to go is not necessarily saying that, yeah, that's a violation. But how can we fix it from the standpoint of the services that we provide, whether it be curbside? And he's paying $15 a month on a garbage service that's running a pretty hefty surplus. Something like $200,000 of your surplus, is that right? Something around there? And.
Well, the biggest problem you might have, I don't know how many new peoples moved in. We had an ordinance that we put out, there's no bags was allowed to lay on the ground. They had to be in the can, and that was a few years ago. But we've had so many new people move in, they don't know the ordinance. They don't know it. They're new. I mean, they might come from a community where they do that. But that's probably where our biggest thing is, we're not educating the new people that moves in this community. These could be new people, I don't know. And we do have some that's still doing it, that's been here for years, I understand that too, but.
That's what you have, because I think.
Education, you brought that up many times, you've got to educate them, and that's the key.
Well, part of that too, that I usually go back to is, what do we as the leaders of the community want to emphasize? Do we want to speak to some type of sort of overall environmental awareness and having our citizens participate in not just throw away absolutely whatever and put it at the curb? I mean, if we privatized it, for example, they could put out anything they wanted and whoever the private company is picking it up would pick up whatever they set out. If they set out a Chevy Nova, they'd probably pick it up and throw it away for them. But do we want our community being the community that just tosses everything in a landfill? Any, whatever landfill that our service or another service would be taking it to? Or do we want to try to contribute somehow to environmental awareness and encourage recycling? Encourage less in the landfill and encourage less waste? So that's something that is kind of twofold. You know, on one hand, we have a responsibility to provide a quality service at a reasonable price. But also, do we all want to be the community that shows leadership in that aspect? And I'm on both sides of that interest. And I go back to, you know, we recycle in my house and rarely do we, I mean, unless we miss a week, we don't need more than a 96-gallon. I think we have a 65-gallon now can for six of us and a cat and a dog. But, because they generate a little bit too. So, you know, it's possible. Exhibit A that you got looks like possibly an extreme case. And the fact, yeah, not much of that could have gone to the recycle center. But that also takes initiative currently, since we don't have curbside recycling, on our citizens' part to understand what the recycle center takes. You know, I drove glass to Lexington today because we don't take glass, and I'm okay with that, I just have to be going to Lexington today. Believe me, I didn't waste gas to take my glass, but it was a double trip. So, you know, that's, you know, do we want to be part of that process in a larger global aspect of environmental awareness? Or do we just want to look at the bottom line? That's a thought.
Hey Terry, real quick, I know we're probably about finished with this subject. But you've really come a long way since this program was implemented and the Herbies came into this community. And Mayor Varney, I know you were part of it, Karen, obviously you were part of it, Marvin and myself. But we were constantly getting complaints from residents in almost every neighborhood about how much trash was being scattered throughout the streets, the yards and everywhere. And we haven't had those complaints. And there's no question, the streets and the sidewalks of Georgetown look far better today than they did. So, I mean, there's definitely something positive. I mean, we've taken a huge step in the right direction. Going that next step and trying to get down to one person per truck, it's going to be a challenge. Because there are going to be people that move into the community and they have no idea what the ordinance is. Their landlord or whomever only provides them with one container. And, you know, just by virtue of moving, you're going to have extra stuff, yeah. So how do you deal with that? I'm not real sure. And I guess other communities have dealt with it and we're not going to be reinventing the wheel. We can go to some other community and find out what they're doing, how they're doing. Maybe that's something the committee can do. It would be nice to get to one person per truck. I do worry a little bit about the recycling side of it. I worry about the expense of it. I mean, I think the idea is great and we've explored it, Karen, you explored it, you did a pilot program or we did a pilot program. And quite honestly, I don't think it had a whole lot of success. But if we want to implement it citywide, it's, there's going to be some expense involved. And the savings that we perhaps get from the one man per truck, if we can operate that way. You know, unfortunately, I don't know how we could possibly reduce the cost right now. Because I think it'd be used to subsidize the recycling program. We won't know until we get into it, but that's just, that's just my estimation. But anyway, Terry, thanks for what you've done because you've done a good job with it.
And the comment about the new residents that are moving in, every resident gets a care package when we deliver a container to them. So I don't think this issue, what you said on A and B, is from new residents.
Yeah.
I think this is from our current residents that's been here a while. If you look at recycling, right now you're collecting a million and five, a million 600 pounds of recycle per year. That's no small number. And that is volunteers coming in, dropping off what you said on Exhibit A here. So the big question is, is how can we get our remaining residents to cooperate like that? And just go over there and participate and drop it off? Because we don't need to take it to the landfill. I'm totally against that. Kelly and I will do everything in our power to make sure that we don't take it to the landfill. That's really a waste.
Terry, do we know kind of increase we've had over the past 10 years or 15 years through recycling? You know, what their, their production or their weight, how it's gone up? Has that been tracked at all?
Oh, yes, we tracked that. But it's flat over the last, I sent you an email today, since '09.
Yeah.
We've had a decrease in it.
That's interesting.
And I attribute that to the economy. When the economy tanked on us, now you got less purchasing power out there. Residents not going out there buying all these new products and throwing away all this cardboard. So that's what's happening now. This year is going to be somewhat flat too. But I think you'll see next year start picking up because we are seeing spikes. The only two commodities you got over there that's old is corrugated and new sprain.
Gas, gas prices as well attribute to that.
Exactly. So right now, I know recycling is just really flat.
Karen, when we did the pilot program, do you remember specifically why it wasn't more successful than it was?
Yes, we didn't actually, what we did at the time was we took a neighborhood and actually went door to door in that neighborhood. The problem was, when we were wanting to do this and talking about it and looking at the numbers and all, was really we didn't have the money to buy the containers. So part of what I was doing was going door to door to see how many folks would actually be willing to buy their, purchase their own containers and to participate in it. And the feedback was probably about, oh, I don't know, maybe two in every 10 was willing, because it was going to be a $65 investment to them to do that. So actually, under the circumstances, I didn't think that was too bad, but it really wasn't enough to go ahead and do that investment into it. But I honestly think from the experience that I had with that, that if we were to provide the containers, that most people, it would reverse. Eight out of every 10 would end up participating with recycling. If it was there, because by nature we're a little bit lazy to drive to the recycling center, but we're not lazy if it's right there that we can toss it in. And I think what we talked about at the time, that with reducing the tipping fees, that we would get a little bit money off the recycling, but you're never going to make money off recycling. That's a misnomer, to make money. But you would be able to sell the recycling and get a little bit of revenue back on the recycling. But the benefit would be the tipping fees, that we'd end up saving off of the tipping fees that we did. And then the situation, because this has been a problem for ever since Terry's been around with the city and before that, is this kind of stuff. And the Herbies helped it a lot. We don't have it as much, but you still have that. But the people don't have any place to put this kind of thing. So if you offered them a second solution, if you look at this picture and you can see through his plastic bag, there's a lot of paper goods that are in there. And you're going to, some people won't do it regardless of what you do to them. If you stick a $25 fine to them every month, they're not going to do it. But I think most citizens, if they had it at their doorstep, they would. But the investment was in the containers yourself. Because Terry at the time, correct me if I'm wrong, but Terry at the time said he could manage with the manpower and do it. Especially if he started it in smaller areas and got bigger, just like we did the Herbie Kirby. He said he could do it with the manpower and be able to handle it and go in one day a week to recycle, just like we do. No, we talked about going every other week actually to start. We talked about going every other week to start. So two times a month, you'd pick up recycling and then you would do your garbage as normal. That's what it was, was every other week. So that's, it was just the initial buying of the Herbie, or the Rosies, that we just, we, the city, didn't have the money for it. And it was just getting the residents willing to invest into it. But they were wanting to participate with it, but they didn't want to, them to have the initial investment.
Would everything go in the Rosie with paper, plastic?
Everything but glass, basically. So actually, what would end up happening, the Rosie would get fuller and your garbage would get less. So you have less to pick up on garbage day.
Cardboard, everything.
Everything, uh-huh. So recycling, actually, if, as the committee talks with. So, recycling, actually, if, as the committee talks with, I mean, really something, because we're so close to being able to do it. If we could do, start the recycling program, but do it slowly, like we did with the Herbies in this neighborhood, then that neighborhood, then that neighborhood, I think Terry's department could handle it and that we could actually do it, and that would help decrease this. And then what you're talking about, because when we talked about raising the garbage rates, that was part of it, that it was going to be to go recycling.
Yeah. In essence, I mean, and I know when we say that, when I've said that we don't have, we have a surplus, what we've done is we've invested the surplus the last two years and maybe even three years into buying a new truck, into buying the automated truck. What's going to happen after we go through the cycle of replacing all the trucks, hopefully with automated, either two man or one man trucks, is that we're going to have a situation where we're going to make everybody put all their trash within Kirby's, follow the ordinance closely, and they're going to have a reduced level of service from what they had 10 years ago, and they'll be paying $15 a month for it. And the surplus will go up because we're not having to buy new equipment in the next five or six years when we replace the fleet, and the system will run more efficiently with less manpower. Therefore, there's going to be even a bigger surplus. And what you're going to get is the citizens calling you on the phone saying, "Well, why am I paying $15 a month, have less service, and you guys have this surplus?" What we have to do is figure out a way, and I've never said that reci, you know, curbside recycling would ever make us money. Even the tipping fees, the savings on tipping fees isn't as much as we think, but you have to implement that program or enhance services in some way to justify, to justify the garbage fee in five or six years, when that argument's made in five or six years. And this is an opportunity right now to do that, to either implement a curbside recycling program, figure out a better way to pick up the garbage, or, I mean, well, we've already figured, done that, but also provide people with extra Kirby's.
I mean, our, you know, my only additional comment is that we can't just continue allowing our citizens to assume that landfills are infinitely open. And during the, this is quite the opposite extreme. During the four years I lived in Japan, the recycling, I mean, they recycled everything. There was a different day, I mean, there was a whole calendar for the month regarding recycling. You could put out aluminum one day, steel one day, refrigerators one day, but the typical trash day was burnable trash, what we think of as what we would throw in a landfill. And at some point during that, they went to clear green bags so that you could see what was in a trash bag that was going into the burnable trash, basically our, what would be going into our Herbie. If you put the wrong thing, it was visible. You know, if you put a recyclable material into it, you usually got notice either from a neighbor or from the city that that's recyclable material. Don't put it in the burnable landfill trash. They didn't use landfills in the city I lived in, but that's, that's part of, that's part of the next, I'm getting a little far ahead, but our two-year term is a little short for what our participation is in the next generation of what we're going to do with all our trash, because our landfills are not just infinite. Doesn't matter how big the U.S. is. Anyway, that's my preaching, sorry.
Do you have a comment?
Mayor, direct this to the maybe Public Works Committee?
Yes.
You and I, Mark.
You guys are doing a great job.
And I'd like to have Andrew to participate in this also.
Absolutely.
Public Works does do a good, a good job. The guys work really hard.
The team do work hard. And I think the team also on automated trucks wants to get it down to, to want to operate. And when you say and look at other neighborhoods, other neighborhoods probably need to look at us. We're, when we're at a benchmark there, we don't, I've looked at Orange, Orangeville, Lexington, Cleveland, Ohio, and we are closer than anybody from getting there. Lexington, right now, is sending two trucks behind me, automated trucks.
Yeah. That's great. I guess when I was thinking of that, I was thinking of communities that are maybe forced into it. I'm thinking of communities in Florida that are having to do it, and, you know, they've already kind of got the system figured out, at least from their angle. Yeah. No, from a local perspective, we're doing great. Like I said, commend you.
Thank them.
Thanks, Terry. Good report. Appreciate it. Okay. Next item, City Attorney, City Clerk, Second Reading, 2012-13 Budget Amendment Ordinance sponsored by Councilmember Tackett.
Approving Amendment Number Three to the City of Georgetown, Kentucky Annual Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Sponsor Councilmember Connie Tackett. Whereas the annual budget adopted by the City Council on July 10, 2012, amended on January 28, 2013, needs to be amended. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Summary, Section One, Ordinance 13-001 is amended as follows. Property sales are increased $7,300. Transfers to other funds are increased $7,300. CIP Fund, capital outlay expenditures are increased $68,300. Property sales are decreased $600,000. Transfers from other funds are increased $668,300. Business Park Fund, property sales are increased $75,000. Transfer from other funds are decreased $61,000. Landfill Fund, transfers to other funds are increased $600,000. Prior year revenues are decreased $600,000. Section Two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section Three, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to the law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, or at www georgetown ky gov.
Motion, Mayor. Motion, Mr. Tackett?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. Any further comments?
Can I ask Stacy a quick question, Mayor?
Yes, you may, certainly.
All right. Stacy, this one is not quite balanced. Is that right?
As far as the
Right.
1213, yes, the initial budget that was adopted was not balanced, so it doesn't run in balance. It's just correcting the classification of the $600,000. And we're going to have to include revenue from the sale that we approved in this back to allow us to have enough money to pay for this.
All right.
Second reading, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lusby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
No.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Good fight. Okay. Next item, Second Reading, Amending, let's see, as, Second Reading, 2013-14 Budget Ordinance, sponsor members Lusby and Mr. Thompson.
An ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Sponsors, Councilmembers David Lusby and Marvin Thompson. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section One, adopts by Incorporated Exhibit, the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Budget of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Governmental Funds, prior year revenues $265,024. Revenues, municipal taxation $1,935,000. Licenses and Permits $14,770,946. Fines and forfeitures $79,000. Intergovernmental Revenues $2,886,244. Charges for Services $146,900. Other Revenues $45,100. Other Financing Sources Transfers $600,000. Total City Revenues $20,463,190. Expenditures, General Government $1,049,050. City Council $150,016. City Clerk $199,291. Police $4,967, $4,967,000.
Want to take a break?
Okay. Police $4,967,620. Public Works $1,123,588. Fire $4,632,642. Code Enforcement $67,878. Building Inspection $347,674. Dispatch Telecommunications $1,302,218. Utilities $442,000. Community Services $3,965,263. Capital Outlay $1,218,200. Debt Service $917,521. Transfers to Other Funds $343,297. Total City Expenditures $20,726,258. Proprietary Funds, prior year revenues $668,209. Revenues, Sanitation $1,812,000. Recycling $174,709. Landfill $120,000. Cemetery $243,187. Other Financing Sources Transfers $347,297. Total Proprietary Revenues $2,697,193. Expenditures, Sanitation $1,795,278. Recycling $242,918. Stormwater $295,285. Landfill $105,200. Cemetery $295,199. Transfer to Other Funds $600,000. Total Proprietary Expenditures $3,333,880. Section Two, authorizes the mayor, except as provided in the Georgetown Purchasing Policy adopted in Municipal Order 11-028, to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section Three, provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section Four, provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, or at www georgetown ky gov.
In discussion.
Motion.
David?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
No.
Mr. Penn?
No.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
No.
Mr. Singer?
No.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
You have 4-3. Failed. What do you want to do? You've had it two months, you're now on the $11,000, and you still can't write. I gave you a balanced budget, no rise in taxes, no use of revenue. All of the employees received a raise. I don't know what else to do for you. You asked for us to bring back a 5% across-the-board rate, cut. We did that also. So, you know, it's in your hands now, as far as I'm concerned. Well, would you like to schedule workshops?
Not really.
I mean, I thought we had our budget done personally.
We also had a vote that there will be, Andrew, the vote we took that passed, that would be no more discussion or
Yeah. Well, we, you all did vote to cease discussion, but, I mean, it kind of killed that with a no vote. I mean, you almost, discussion is now implied unless somebody changes their vote.
I guess I'd like to know if there is something specific, you know? There's never a budget that's passed that every member of the council is totally in favor with. There's line items, and there are things that are going to come up throughout the year that at that time, we can have objection to, we can perhaps vote against. I mean, there's never a perfect budget. So, I guess I'd like to know if there's something that someone has, a suggestion that could get this through. We're obviously running out of hours.
Well, I would never, I'll speak first. I was, I mean, it was voted for by council, but I was not in favor of a 5%, 5% across-the-board cut. I didn't, at the time when I spoke to this, I was, I didn't, it didn't feel like it was fair, where the directors came in, some sparingly with their request. And I don't think any of them were maybe excessive, but yet individually, when you look at the different departments, the requests were different, and I didn't feel like the 5% across the board was fair. However, that's how council voted, and our department directors stepped up and came back with a 5% reduction in operation expenditures. And I just didn't, I still don't feel like that was necessarily the best method. I mean, we've given a $15 million incentive to bring Lexus to town and been warned that, you know, we need to prepare for what's coming, what will change in the next, at the end of two years. So, there are, unlike the last couple of years during, this is my third term on council, it seems like we've spent, you know, more time getting into the specifics and having more workshops and having more detailed discussions and more details of individual departments during our council meetings, but we hadn't done that this time, and we had an assumption of, I think, agreement on the budget, and yet, really, I don't think we're in agreement. I think we're, we have different opinions of it as individual council members. And we have sort of gloss coated it and moved forward, and now it's June 24. So, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it.
Is it the 5% reduction? Is that the part that you're not comfortable with?
That's part of it. The other part that I'm not comfortable with is our delay in looking at some of the capital expenditures, because in the past and over the last 15 years of watching council and being on council, it seems like when things are delayed to look at, it doesn't always come back around in the timely fashion that at the moment, the sense of urgency is put off because of the budget season itself. And I feel like, again, I mentioned this before, maybe tongue in cheek, but, you know, I hate to be the only Lexus town in the country that also doesn't have a police department. We're going to be the lonely town with them, but why should we wait six months to look at that? So, there's several issues, but I think individually, individually, according to departments, there are some other things we could do. So...
I think from my perspective, and I agree with you in terms of looking at the budget as sort of a, you can't hang it up on one individual thing. But to me, you know, I was here in '07 and '08, and those are probably the most harrowing times that I can think of being on council. What we faced then was about a $3 million absence of funds from our budget, you know?
What we faced then was about a three-million-dollar absence of funds from our budget, you know, I mean, basically a three-million-dollar hole. Two years from now, we're looking at a two-and-a-half-million-dollar hole that will last for four years, about four million, six hundred and fifty thousand that'll last for four years after that, over those four years. And I think the basic question that I have is how have we dealt with knowing that's coming down the road? And I don't blame the mayor or the administration at all. This budget was put together without fully understanding, and they couldn't have understood because it just wasn't public, fully under, understanding the ramifications of that incentive package, what it would mean two or three years down the road. Mayor gave us a balanced budget based upon not knowing what was going to happen two years down the road, gave the employees a three percent increase, was able to keep things going. It's fine. The problem is, as a council, now this is what we know, the two-and-a-half-million-dollar hole coming down the road per year for the next four years, or four years after the next two years. You know, I don't think that has been adequately addressed by this council, and I'm part of the council, I'm part of the blame.
Do you have a, do you have a specific remedy for, for that? I mean...
Well, I mean, we all work as a council, work together as such. To be honest, outside of last night, I really didn't have any idea that this thing was going to fail tonight. I knew I was going to vote, but that was it. And we took a straw vote...
Yeah.
About three weeks ago, and it was five-three-four, so.
So we had no idea, the mayor had no idea to make it, try to figure anything out, we just kind of let it lay out there until tonight.
Mark, I share your concern.
We're all concerned about it.
We're all concerned about it. There, we are. But we obviously have a responsibility to get a budget passed by the last day of this month, and by passing a budget tonight or here in the next few days, we can still deal, and we, I think we fully expect to deal with that, we've got to deal with that issue, whether it's a problem or it's a blessing, we've got to deal with it.
It's there.
I think it's a, it's a blessing. At the end of the day, it's a blessing, and we're going to have to deal with it.
Twenty-five years from now, it will consider it a blessing.
I think sooner than that, Mark.
But for right now, it's...
Sooner than that.
But, well, the next twenty years, it'll be a blessing, but for the short term, in the next five to ten years, it's going to be a real challenge for the city, and we know what's coming.
It is.
We lay, we laid off in oh-eight, we eliminated an entire department, we laid off the entire Department of Cardo, plus I think fourteen or fifteen more employees on top of that. It was harrowing.
Yeah.
I mean, that was horrible time to be on council, and I don't want to have to do that again.
I don't either. I've said that repeatedly.
No one wants to go through that again.
No.
And now's the opportunity.
And I think a great lesson was learned by everyone.
Now's the opportunity. I mean, I voted against this budget in that straw vote three weeks ago, and I was one of the three votes against it, but it was, you know, at the time, it was five-three-four, and I just assumed as of seven o'clock last night that, that it was going to pass tonight.
Sorry.
My assumption, and my assumption when I voted, and I voted for the five percent reduction because it seemed like we had talked about it, the council, we had worked to agree on how we could remedy necessary capital expenditures, fire equipment, fire trucks, police vehicles, a police department, capital expenditures in sanitation, or public works. But then, really, it seemed like, and I hate to use the cliche lip service, but I don't think the compromise was genuine. I felt like maybe I made the wrong decision in voting for a five percent reduction, so why would I go back and support that now? I don't feel like, you know, about a month ago or five weeks ago, I felt like it was, it was imperative that we discuss this individually.
Kelly, workshops are shipped with the council, and as I said, we, you've had this two months. You guys could have discussed it.
Yeah, there's been, there's been work, there's been work that, that has been done outside of council. I just feel like we could do better.
You know, I've, I've not been quiet by any means, my position on this budget. I, I think that any kind of an across-the-board cut has a much different impact on each department. I think it punishes those department heads who are, are more aggressive in, in keeping their budgets down. I could go down a laundry list of things that, that I'm not comfortable with in the budget, but, you know, there were, there were essentially two things, two hurdles, I think, that we had to jump over when we started this budget process. One of them being the impending two-and-a-half-million-dollar cut in the revenue stream in two years. I'm not sure that we know how big that is yet, but if anyone wants to try to go through and find two-and-a-half-million dollars to cut out of this budget, I welcome it. And the other one is our capital needs. We don't want a police department, we need a police department. It's not a want, it's a need. We don't necessarily want to have to buy another nine-hundred-thousand-dollar tower truck, but when you've got one that's almost twenty years old, you need to buy another nine-hundred-to-a-million-dollar tower truck. Neither one of those things are addressed in this budget. We, we've not, we've not made any efficiencies in this budget. We've cut five percent out of operating expenditures of our own departments, but we've allowed our inter-local departments to go unscathed. I, I just, there, there's absolutely no way that I could vote for this budget the way it is now. I, I think that, you know, we do have a responsibility to adopt a budget, there's no question with that, but I would also say that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers in Georgetown to make sure that we're doing it right, and that we're doing it in a comprehensive manner. And, you know, an across-the-board cut, and I'm, what was the five percent operating, what did that end up tallying up?
Around a hundred and seven, two hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, see, that's, that's a little over a hundred thousand dollars in a, in a, you know, twenty-million-dollar budget. That's, that is a, that's a knee-jerk, feel-good reaction, I think is what that is.
May I ask, who, who brought that five percent to the table?
Right here.
Do you feel like that was, what, a knee-jerk reaction?
No.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't call it that.
I didn't, I didn't either.
But I'm, I'm not insulted about what he said, but I don't call it.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to insult you. I, I think at that point in time, we were backed against the wall to try to get something done, and, and I appreciate that. I don't think that that's, I think that there are efficiencies that can be made in this budget that we could get a lot more revenue than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, that's just the bottom line. So I, you know, I've said from the get-go, and I think we've, we've gone round and round about, you know, do we want to go department by department? No, we don't. Yes, we do. Well, we're going to, then we take a break, then we come back, and we're not going to. So I, I think there was a lot of interest in going through and working through this budget in, in a much more detailed manner than what we did, and somehow every time it came up for a deeper discussion or a vote, we decided not to do it. So I've been kind of steadfast in that, you know, from the get-go. I'm willing to, to put in the time necessary in order to do that. I know, you know, we had several meetings last year, and, and I guess we, we took a beating for having that many meetings by several different people, but, you know, to me, we're, we're looking at, thi, this is not an everyday budget that we're having to deal with. This is a budget that, that has a, an expiration in two years, that we're, we're going to have to take a seriously different approach. We're going to have to look at things completely outside of the box, that we're going to have to look at things that are unpopular, we're going to have to look at things that we've never looked at before in order to accommodate a deficit of two-and-a-half-million dollars.
Brad?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to interject...
Go ahead.
Favorably.
Mm-hmm.
When the five percent came to us, and actually Karen, I think you were probably proposing a ten percent...
I was.
...cut. You know, we did go through the police department, line item by line item, and it turned out to be, was it thirty-some thousand?
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand? Ironically, it was right at five percent that, that was going to be cut from the police department. And in some of the discussions that I had with the department heads and, and some of the different folks in, in those higher levels in those departments, they preferred that we didn't go through each and every line item. They'd rather us give them a, a specific, I guess, threshold or percentage to reach, and they, they didn't want us micromanage in their departments. They felt like that they can maneuver, manipulate the monies within their departments better than we could. And, and, you know what, I've got faith in them, and that's, that's why I was more comfortable with the five percent versus going through each and every one of them as we have done in the past, and as we could certainly do again. I don't think that's the best approach personally, after speaking with them.
Stacy, did we have any departments go over budget this year?
I mean, not that, I, I know of, I've got a...
I mean, we, we still have to close out the last quarter.
We picked a line item that's gone over, and then we said you can just take that from another line item, and trying to keep all the, all salaries, and it's balanced.
Our level of control is department by department. I mean, we can go through and say we're going to cut ten thousand out of office supplies or five thousand here, but at the end of the day, it's that gross amount that we cut is what they're going to have to come down, and that's really the only level of control we really have. I mean, we don't, I, I don't want us to have any, like, you know, control over, basically over the office supplies. I mean, it's just, it's the total number that we cut out, and that's how their line item is cut out, is that right? I mean, that's how their department is cut out.
The five percent was...
Yeah, yeah.
Gave them a number and made the cuts where they felt they could.
Well, we can look at this budget, we can go over line item by line item if you want, it's fine. And I'm in favor of the police department, I have been, I'm in favor of the fire truck. We're not going to find that kind of money in this budget to do that right now. And council made a commitment that we'd come back, we put the money in for the, for the plans for the police department, I think, didn't we? We said we would come back first of the year and look and see if financially we could buy the fire truck. That's why I thought this budget would go through, but we can't find that kind of money to do that right now for both those capital improvements.
You know, the other thing that I would say is, we don't know what kind of revenue we're going to see increased over the next six to twelve months. Hopefully, it's going to be better than we realize. Hopefully, that'll offset, you know, the couple of million dollars that are going to be foregoing in the incentive.
That's why we agreed to wait till...
Expect, expected from net profits? What do you, what do you expect?
Uh, hopefully, net profits and hopefully payroll.
Okay.
And, you know, there still are a couple mechanisms out there that we could put in place that have been brought up, that, that this body has chosen not to take action on right now. We could, you know, when the time comes, you know, if, if we have to, we have to. Right now, this body's just not prepared to do it. At least they weren't in the last, the last discussion where we actually were prepared to take a vote. So how do we address that? Hopefully, we'll have more revenue, hopefully, there'll be more jobs. I mean, you know, I mean, we're just forecasting.
We're seeing that.
Yeah.
We're seeing that, David, definitely.
So what I think we have to do is, we have to get a past budget, we have to get a budget in place, and we have to continue to monitor it with Stacy and with everybody else that we have here at City Hall and the mayor on a monthly basis, and just stay on top of it. But we've got to get a, a balanced budget in place.
So we have a balanced budget.
We've got to pass a budget.
Definitely.
And, you know, there's got to be some compromise. There does. And what I would say as far as the inter-locals go, let's take them back, let's go back to the committees, let the committees start looking at them. Set some meetings, set some schedules. I don't think that needs to be something that's mandated by one body or the other. I think it's got to be worked on together.
Hmm.
You know, the county needs us, we need the county.
But how do you tell your own, but how do you tell your own departments that you're going to cut them anything, whether it be five percent operational, five percent across the board, and you don't, you don't explore the inter-locals?
I think you do explore them. I think you do it collectively. I think you do it with the county. I do. And I think we did them a favor by not allowing the ten percent cut. You know, it's tough, and I think we all said this, and Karen, and I'm kind of making fun here, but Karen knows where I'm coming from, if, if one of the departments came to us, and I know the mayor would do this, if one of them came to us and they needed something, we'd come through for them. We just, we just got to, we just, we had, we have to make some cuts somewhere. You know, we've kind of got to set the tone...
I totally agree.
For where, what's coming down the road.
I, I agree one hundred percent.
Absolutely.
But I don't believe we've done that with this budget.
Well, let's think about it. As much as it hurt, we did cut the police department out of it, we cut the fire truck out of it, that was huge. We're holding off on filling, how many positions, was it?
Four.
Four until November the first. We've, we've made cuts, there's no doubt. There was going to be an additional five or six million dollars in debt that right now we're holding off on until we see where, think, hopefully, we can see where things are coming in over the next couple quarters. And as the mayor said, they're coming in better, and then we've seen that through their finance meetings, we've seen that. I mean, I've had meetings on a monthly basis with Stacy, and Mark, when you and I were on the finance committee, I mean, that was the thing that you liked to point out, and I, I certainly did as well, like to see where those numbers were and compare them Because we can get through this budget, we can pass this budget, and we can work on all the things that we want to work on. This budget doesn't have to be leveraged to get something done.
No. I don't think it's being leveraged. I, I think if we were truly interested in getting something done, we could have started the getting something done two months ago when we got the budget.
Well, I...
And, and, and to be leveraged into the twelfth-hour speech, I, I think is, is, that's just as disingenuous for those of us who voted against this tonight, to vote against this tonight. We, I, several of us have asked to go through this budget numerous times, and we've been talked out of it, voted out of it, whatever you want to say, several times.
Well, excuse me, Brad, if there's five of y'all that want to do it, you could have done it.
I have no idea what you mean by that. We just, we just...
If you wanted to go, if you wanted to go line item by line item before we got tonight, you all you had to do is made a motion, you got eight council members, it took four votes, the mayor passed, proget or five to go through line item by line item. Never was brought up that way. Never was brought up that way.
I believe it was brought up several times.
First reading two weeks ago, not a word was said. Yet two weeks, if you had anything you wanted to do with the budget, to do it before we come to the second reading. I don't know if, Stacy, have you received any inquiries during the two-week period?
A couple, I think, today, I'm on the copy notes at nine. Not anything new, other than the command of the office that was put in.
So we want to revert back to the budget we're now operating under? Is that where we stand?
I mean, if...
We got one week.
Well, last night when I heard that this might not have sufficient support to, to go through, my comment was, well, I guess we've got a busy week ahead of us, so the fourth or potentially the fifth, I don't, I don't think Mr. Showalter's still out of town, you know, it, it would appear to me that the four people that voted against it need to get together and be an open council meeting and at least sit down and work on the budget. If anybody else wants to join in, join in.
It's yours, and do with it what you want. We've done everything ask of us here in City Hall.
Mayor, a quick question for you. I, I know that there had been some talk about putting hiring freeze in place, and that's really not something that the council has the latitude to do, and, and I know there's other mechanisms perhaps that, that the council might be able to put in place as it relates to positions and so forth, eliminate them, which I, I don't know that we want to go down that path. But I might ask you this question, if, if, whether, would you, would you be willing to, from your administrative position, to hold off on filling some positions for a certain period of time to, I guess, to try to gain support?
No, I'm, I'm going to hire the people that I feel we need, David, to, to do the job that we're faced with.
Right, right, I know, but for their, for a certain number of months, we, I thought we all discussed maybe holding off, not, not totally.
What we have going right now is, it's going to be, it's going to be several months... What we have going right now is, it's going to be several months to get people in place.
Right.
That time period will come and go.
Right.
Stacy, I don't think... We didn't all agree to hold off. I think what you brought to us was the general timeframe it was going to take in order to fill a couple of those positions.
That's what I'm referring to.
Right. And then we...
Mr. Councilmember Lesby was one of the sponsors of the ordinance.
Stacy, would you get up to the mic so we can get you on record?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
You know, Councilmember Lesby asked that I bring a balanced budget since he was sponsoring the ordinance. And I did that mainly by, there were four vacant positions, two crossing guards, two firefighters. Crossing guards have been vacant for a while, almost the whole year, I believe. And speaking of firefighters and the time period that it takes to get them tested and get them in place, in the budget that was read June 10th and again June 9th, it holds, it basically takes out funding for those positions until November 1st.
Right. Okay.
Looking at a higher date for those four vacant positions.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Would you be okay with that, Mayor? Would you be okay with that?
Oh, yeah. We're going along the flow. Yes. I mean...
So, that's already in the budget that's written.
That's already there.
That's what we...
All right. But what Karen was proposing tonight, how different was it from what you just described?
Um, my understanding, I apologize because I haven't really had a chance to speak to Karen except for, I think, briefly at our June 10th finance meeting, when you maybe brought mention of the idea. My understanding of what Karen was asking was that we leave the funding for positions, excluding the four I just talked about. I'm assuming it would stay the same way with the November 1st date. But leave funding for positions. Of course, I know Andrew's already commented back to whether or not it's to be done, but I don't want to say if it is. She was asking, I guess, the council to give permission to hire...
What I wanted to do, what...
I'll let you explain because it was your...
What I wanted to do, and actually, to be honest with you, I was pretty much ready to vote for the budget until I got the email back from Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
I want that on record.
On the record, okay. But anyway, anyway, I was pretty much ready to vote for it. And actually, the reason, I think there could be some other cuts on the table. I was the one that introduced cutting the 10%, which got compromised down to the 5%. So, I was like, okay, the compromise that's in there was mine. So, that's why I was leaning to vote for the budget.
Slow down a little bit, would you? You're going 90 miles an hour.
Too excited.
I'm sorry. I can't do that. So, I was leaning for it. Well, then, with the hiring freeze, is what we talked about doing, the hiring freeze. Because one of the main concerns I have, that I had to face while being mayor, when the big, the bottom fell out, the only way to come up with substantial amount of money with that was to lay off folks. Well, 21 people altogether is what we laid off during that time. So, actually, it would be better now to start saying, okay, if we had a position that wasn't a, all positions are important, but some are more necessary than others to make government run, if those positions came in front of the council to say, okay, council, are you ready to let that money go or not go at that time? So, it's like, let's say a police officer. Because I know this council wasn't real thrilled. I've heard it from many different council members. They weren't real thrilled when the position for the legal secretary slash HR secretary came about. There's several people here that weren't real thrilled about that. So, they kind of felt like they didn't know that it was coming and didn't have a part of it. Well, it was in the budget. And so, since it was funded in the budget, the mayor went ahead and did what he could do and put that position in place. So, that was kind of the ideal behind it, was not take them out of the budget. Because once you take it out of the budget, it is hard to put it back in the budget. But to actually say before it happened to come to further the council and see if the council wanted to continue funding it. Well, according to Andrew, that is not, that can't work that way. You actually have to take it physically, the money away from it currently in the budget process, not wait till later and say, yes, we will spend it for that or not. Correct?
Yes.
Did I talk too fast for you?
I don't really keep my mouth shut in this kind of thing, but since I've been implicated in the non-passage of the budget, I will exercise my right to address it.
It takes a bit.
Yeah. You understand, you know, I've seen a lot of cities and a lot of counties through a lot of budgets. The job of this council is to tell the executive branch what they have to spend and to tell them what they have to spend it on. You guys can't go beyond that to say, well, we're going to tell you what you can spend it on, except we may or may not approve it, especially when it comes down to personnel. The legislature has been very clear in delineating what role the council has in determining what positions get funded. And its sole duty is to say, these are the positions, and here's the funding source for it. So, and respectfully, with respect to your suggestion, I'm going to advise the mayor not to agree to any provision that would take away from his authority as mayor because it does a disservice to the entire city to take away a right that is given to him statutorily. You know, it's a fundamental separation of powers issue. The council sets the budget. The mayor spends the money. It's as simple as that. And that relationship is not to be toyed with by agreement, by vote of the council, or by acceptance of the mayor. So...
So, accepting what Andrew said, that is why I voted against the budget based on what he said. So, based on what he said, because I'm not disagreeing with what you say, actually. So, with that in place, then we have to go back into the budget and do something different with the budget. Because over the past couple of years, from the time that I left as mayor to the time now, there's been that 21 people in positions that were not here, that were laid off, or whatever was the reason, it's pretty much filled back up. So, this budget that we have now, the mayor's presented, the council's worked on, is not a bad budget for this current year. But as what Mark has said and what Brad's saying as well, it doesn't address what's coming for the future is where the problem lies. And I think one of the biggest things we're going to face for the future, unless the revenues are going to project where we hope they're going to project, then you're going to have to deal in two years from now, whoever's going to be mayor, and I'm not running, but whoever's going to be mayor is going to have to deal with personnel being that big chunk again. So, why are we adding more personnel if we don't feel like we have to have them at this point in time to turn around and go through laying them off? So, anyway, Andrew's email was the reason why I voted against the budget. It wasn't a bad budget, but there was things I think we haven't addressed in the future.
Mr. Hartley.
Well, 21 more people. People are back that you laid off. I don't know where they're working.
Toyota didn't lay off any.
Mr. Hartley, listen closely to what I'm about to say because just correct me if I'm wrong in what I'm about to say. I'm talking to Ms. Tinglesems, Mrs. Tinglesems.
Say it loud.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to speak softly.
Speak fast.
When, basically, what you're saying is, from my base, I guess extrapolating over to the personnel side, we create the positions, and then it's the mayor through the budget process that pays for those positions and funds those positions. That's correct.
Determines that they need to be filled.
Determines if they need to be filled. We, I think it was last council before Karen came back on board, we eliminated those 21 positions. They were still on the books, but we eliminated them. They were unfilled. So, I don't know necessarily where that's going. You know, I've been saying this, you know, when we've brought up the possibility of a hiring freeze, I've been saying basically the same thing. Positions are created. The expectation is they're going to be filled if they're created. You can't stop the mayor from filling those positions with the funds that we've made available to him in the budget.
Except by not funding it.
Except by not funding. But the only way we could control that, though, is to basically go department by department, take whatever we think the salary and benefits of an unfilled position is and decrease the budget by that amount. But it's still up to him to...
You can eliminate a position.
Yeah. We did that by ordinance.
Sure. And he lacks the power to fill that position.
Okay. All right. So, that would be our option.
The council's role, if it desires that a position not be filled, is to eliminate the position.
Eliminate the position.
By ordinance.
But if we don't eliminate the budget behind that position...
No. If you eliminate the position, it can't be filled. There's nothing to fill.
Now, have to worry about the money.
But from a budget perspective, we would have to readjust that budget.
So, if that's what you want to do...
Otherwise, it's going to be spent on, it's going to be spent on salary. I mean, it's spent on what it's allocated to.
I mean, a hiring freeze basically says that we don't have the money to pay for this position. We don't feel it's necessary to have filled today, but we think when the money comes available, it is going to be magically necessary. If we feel comfortable with what we call as a hiring freeze, then just eliminate the position altogether. If you don't think it's necessary, you don't think it's necessary.
Every position we have that you have created, you've also funded. I mean, it's not a matter of not being able to afford that position because you've already put money in there to cover it. It comes with the budget.
It comes down to a fundamental recognition of, once you have established the position and allowed the mayor to fill it, you as the council have decided that that is a position that remains funded. But with respect to unfilled positions or new positions, the council's power is to eliminate a position.
Or establish.
Or establish.
Thanks.
Andrew, that's kind of what I was saying when I said there's a couple ways to skin the cat.
Sure. And I understand that my email was not meant as a reflection that you, the council cannot do what it desires to do, but it cannot do it in that form.
All right. So, is there a way to do it tonight? Is there a way to...
Well, the council would have to identify what particular positions it wanted to eliminate.
I think we have those. Some, not all?
Not all.
To be eliminated by ordinance.
But the question is, does it require a change in the budget in order to accomplish what you, what you want to accomplish? If the answer to that is yes, then you have to do two new readings.
Okay. Well, or, of course, you're going out on a limb, and you probably don't like to go out on limbs. You could support the budget as it's being proposed and then come back with a first and a second reading, I guess, on those positions at the next couple meetings. And, you know, realistically, those positions probably aren't going to get filled that quick. If they did, they'd be abolished anyway, right?
Right. I mean, I wouldn't recommend the council abolish any position that is currently funded or is currently filled.
They can.
They can.
And they did last, the last council, last council that wasn't involved and did.
Yeah. It can. I'm not saying it can't. I'm saying it's, it can be bad. But I think you're right. I don't think there's any positions that you're contemplating that are going to get filled. And if there are, you know, let's get that on the table and move on. But I personally don't know why you would allow that, if that's your point of contention, to hold up passing what is otherwise a budget that everyone agrees on. Or not everyone, but at least we had a majority when we moved forward two weeks ago.
Well, I don't think even, I don't want to speak for the other council member that's not here, but I don't think if he was here, I don't think he was, I'm not sure exactly what his concern was, but I don't think he was comfortable with it either. So, even we had substantial change, came back to vote again, I'm not sure how much is going to get passed the next time around. But I think the council as a whole, except for the three, is ready to sit down and talk some more and see if there is any other savings to the budget. Now, I'll say this. I hope we don't lose what little savings that we have accomplished, but maybe there's some things that we can move a little bit more to start preparing for two years.
And to be clear, if the budget, as it was last year, is not adopted by July 1st, we simply revert back to the current year's budget and operate. So, there's no, no one's going to get fired. No one's, no, so there's not any huge implications. It would probably put off some minor moves, but as a whole, city still operates. No one's let go. There's not any major outcry.
That won't happen unless the council eliminates a position that's filled now. There will be no one let go.
And I think even last year, because we had raises in last year's budget, I believe that we even made those raises retroactive from July 1st. Did we not?
Yes.
Can you do that, Andrew?
We did last year.
Yeah, we did. We did it. We implemented raises last year, and because we didn't adopt our budget until, I think, the second week of July, we made those raises retroactive until July 1st. So...
It'd be the same thing.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay. What's your pleasure? I'm ready to move on.
Move on.
I think the vote's already been taken. It's up to you guys what you want to do going forward right now.
Do we desire to have a revote based on any revealed intentions?
No. Not for me.
Well, see how plain she says it. She says it so well.
What's the, are we going to get a plan in place? Are we just going to move on and sort of keep our fingers crossed or...
I would, yeah. I mean, obviously, there are problems with the budget. Majority of council feels that way. I would suggest some sort of workshop or some sort of meeting.
Well, I'll speak from a procedural and legal standpoint if I can.
You can.
You know, everybody knows that we got to have a, we got to have a budget read and passed by, was it Sunday? Sunday the 31st?
30th.
30th, last day of the month. And we got to have, we're going to have to have two new readings. I mean, I won't, we can't accept, if it's a budget ordinance, we can't accept anything less. So, there's no, there's really no such thing as a minor change to numbers in the budget. So, you'll have to have a first reading, and then you'll have to allow 24 hours for media notice and a special call meeting. So, really, you're looking at, you guys got to have something by Friday. Or, you know, you got to, you're reverting back to the old ordinance.
I was going to say, or we stay on the budget that we're now engaged in.
When did we pass last year's budget? We passed that what?
I don't know. Brad, you said second week.
When did the second week of July last year?
I think it was July the 10th, I believe.
Yeah. That sounds about right.
I think.
Well, I am free to have a meeting every night this week except for Thursday. So...
I am always free, believe it or not, except in the morning.
Anybody given a thought to having some workshops during the day and to coming and visiting us in the office to have these discussions?
I think that's difficult because most of us have a full-time job. It's why that doesn't happen that way. I think we'd like to, but I think that's what the problem is.
Well, if you're going to have any kind of a workshop, you got to let it out.
What kind of notice do you have to get on?
Can't leave here tonight.
Is it 24-hour?
Right.
Media notice. So, the earliest would be Wednesday?
Yep.
Wednesday? No, it's not an advertisement. It's notice.
Notice. So, it could be Tuesday.
It could be Friday. Friday.
What do you mean? We could not have a meeting Wednesday?
Workshop, yes. Yes. As soon as you're looking at is Wednesday. Actually, unless you wanted to have it at 8:00, I could go run and get a notice out right now, but I'd rather you do it. I'd rather you do the notice tomorrow. Yeah.
The newspaper's sitting right there. So, as long as we say we're going to have it and it's 24 hours, he's got it.
You got that.
It's got to be written.
Means we'll start at 8:00 tomorrow night.
I pulled the attorney's to the building. I got a full newspaper.
Possibly posting on the courthouse door.
And courthouse. How about City Hall?
City Hall.
Yeah, let's do that, too.
Well, I can be here any evening this week, and I can be here in the afternoons if service is desired.
Just shoot for Wednesday night, since that's the earliest that we can do it.
That'd be fine with me.
All right.
I'll be here.
Motion.
I don't know who else, but I'll be here. Second.
Roll call vote.
What's being proposed?
Meeting on Wednesday evening.
And bring, and the list of, 6:00. At 6:50?
Yes.
And a list of the unfilled positions, if we could have a list of the unfilled.
Let me, I'm going to interject as stepping outside my legal counsel role for just a second. Like I said, I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of city councils through a lot of budgets. And city council is not necessarily the time to, I mean, that's the time when you all conduct your business. And city council is not necessarily the time to, I mean, that's the time when you all conduct your business. But it'd be great if you all would come to the table with the things you wanna implement, rather than saying, "Let's have an open discussion in council about what we wanna do." That's not, that's not the thing that you accomplish in a city council meeting. You have discussion, yes, but you have discussion on a concrete proposal. "I, so-and-so, propose that we have a $2,000 cut in X, a $3,000 cut in Y, and a $10,000 cut in Z. Let's have a vote on that," any discussion. Rather than coming in here and having general discussions about, "Well, we might cut this and we might cut that." It's incumbent upon you all to, especially now that the mayor has come back three times with the revisions that have been requested, to say, "Here are the revisions I want," and to have the body to consider it as a whole. Otherwise, we're gonna be here until March of next year.
I think you're, you said it well. I think tonight would've been an appropriate time to have, you know, if you had issues with the budget, to have, that's why I asked the question right off the bat. You know, what suggestions does someone have? Does someone have an issue? Just maybe a sticking point where we could get through this tonight.
June 3rd would've been good.
There's a motion on the table, I think, isn't there?
Yes, there is. He was just clarifying what we should, what you should be doing come Wednesday. So, go ahead with the roll call vote on the proposal that we meet on.
Mayor, I can't be here. This is, I was anticipating this budget being done. I'm tied up for the whole week. I'll support the meeting, and I don't know whether I'll support the budget when it comes back, but I will be here when you have your first and second reading, if you have it this week.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinglesems?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
No.
Mrs. Tackett?
Sure.
Alright. You have voted to meet on Wednesday at 6:00 in a special call meeting. And we will get a notice, written notice out that that meeting will take place.
That'd be on TV, one, so I can tape it?
DVR it, yeah.
It's not working at this time.
Oh, wow. Alright.
Okay, next item. Second reading, amending animal ordinance, sponsor, Councilmember Tackett. Second reading.
An ordinance regulating the keeping of livestock within city limits, sponsor, Councilmember Connie Tackett. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Georgetown. Section 1, the section 3-21 of the Code of Ordinances is amended as follows. Section 3-21 definitions. I'm gonna start over because that's not the summary.
Yes, please.
No, it is.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Got mine done, so summary.
What a big ordinance, just to keep livestock in it?
An ordinance regulating the keeping of livestock within city limits. Summary. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Georgetown. Section 1, amend section 3-21 of the Code of Ordinances to exclude livestock from the definition of pet or companion animal. Section 2, amend section 3-22 of the Code of Ordinances to exempt farming operations conducted on land zoned for agricultural use from the prohibitions on keeping livestock within city limits. Section 3, amend section 3-27 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for notice of violation 10-day grace period, empowerment of livestock, and a fine of $20 for violation of section 3-22. Provides for sale of impounded livestock to a farming operation. Provides for euthanasia in event purchaser cannot be found. Section 4, provides that if any portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unlawful, such portion shall be deemed a separate provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 5, provides that this ordinance shall have become effective upon adoption and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination. The City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky dot com.
Yes, call for a motion for approval in a second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Motion.
Motion, Madam Ms. Tackett. Do we have a second? We do not have a second, so, motion. Dies for lack of a second. So, we, do we have any discussion now?
Mayor, I...
We refer back to the ordinance the way it was, then. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, Mark.
I did get ahold of the Health Department and talked to them about this, and they do have some concerns. I was hoping that Gene Thomas would've been here tonight, and it might be, might be small, but still, it could, you know, there's always possibilities that it could be washed down into the storm sewers and down into your drinking water and stuff, so. There are some concerns out there over livestock in this community, so. I was hoping he's here to be able to explain that. I just wasn't gonna vote one way or the other for it, so he spoke, so.
Mayor, we do have, we do have a member of Animal Control here that would like to say,
Oh, okay.
speak on this, if that's alright.
Shed some light on the subject. We certainly appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Nate Mulligan, County Animal Control. I'm here tonight in support of this. I think it would be, I think it's the best course. We do get several livestock calls a year. Excuse me. It's mostly chickens, and then here recently, the swine issue, which we haven't really had any problem enforcing the chicken issues. But with the Hampton, the pig, that's kinda opened up a whole new can of worms, so. But we are in support of this.
How many? I mean, the reason I voted against it wasn't the chickens. I mean, I think that's, I don't see how, right now, we can probably do chickens within the city limits for the simple reason that it's just a nightmare trying to figure out an ordinance to try to keep them. I think the main thing I was concerned about was you have certain breeds of pigs that are specifically, seem to be companion pet house animals. And to kinda broadly paint them within the livestock grouping is the main problem I had with this ordinance. But keeping chickens is still gonna be a problem within the city limits to me.
You know, there are zoonotic diseases that go with pigs, swine. I actually brought a list with, well, I thought I brought a list with me to give you, but, and that may be one of the things that the Health Department could probably help you with. I just don't see how it would help. It's gonna hurt, as far, in my opinion, the overall quality of the city if we have all these new odors coming in from the pigs, from the chickens. You know, they, I heard in, at the last council meeting, I heard someone bring up the idea of a certain amount of time they could spend outside, a certain amount of times they could be, you know, on tethers. We have a similar thing with dogs, and we have our time in enforcing that, because we don't have someone who can always go by every hour on the hour or sit there all day just to check and see if the dog's still there or the pig. We're just, just here to let you know, we are, we do believe in this. Think this is gonna work out great if you do wanna pass it.
What about it in particular that you like? Is it the definition?
You know, it was running smooth. I think the wording was a little off, and we are opposed to the livestock at all. Whether it be a micro mini pig or a full-blown hog or chicken.
So, the way the ordinance reads now, the reason we were doing this was to give a little more teeth to the ordinance. Is that correct? More comprehensive?
Yes. I mean, first off, now, he said things were going smooth, and that's true, but let's say they had a pig in a city that we, they clearly decided was a violation of the ordinance. Well, all it says is, "It's a violation of the ordinance." It doesn't say what they're supposed to do about it. They can't tick it, as far as I know. They can't remove the animal, as far as I know, unless there's some danger to the health of the animal. So, we have an ordinance that has no teeth. It just says you can't do it. So, we fixed that by saying, "Yeah, you can't do it, and if you do, here's what's gonna happen." And second, you had the confusion of, in one breath, you say you can't have livestock, but in the second breath, you say you can have a companion animal, and companion animal covers the whole world, as long as you can say that animal fulfills some kind of personal need. So, that needs to be fixed, and I fixed that simply by saying livestock, or I'm sorry, companion animal does not in any way, in any case, include livestock. Problem fixed. And then, we had the problem of, we ban livestock in the city when we've got 30 or 40 legitimate farms on agricultural purposes, and there's no real exception. So, those folks are running legitimate farm operations and are technically doing so in violation of the ordinance. So, those are the things that I cleaned up. I wanna say personally, I think the idea of having pigs and chickens in the city is bad. It's a bad idea all around. I wanna, you wanna be nice to the people who like to raise pigs, but it's a sanitary issue. It's an issue of noise. It's an issue of smell. It's an issue of, once these things get loose, you know, they're going in and causing damage to neighbors' properties. I mean, in that sense, they're really no different than dogs, but let's face it. We've had, dogs have been domesticated, cats have been domesticated over thousands of years. Pigs and chickens have not. They are farm animals. So, I drafted the ordinance from the perspective of, anything short of an outright ban is a major administrative burden on the folks who are in charge of running this. And I think Nathan will agree that if you're gonna allow pigs and chickens, you have to do so with some kind of, there has to be some kind of licensing mechanism, some kind of funding. They're gonna have to be able to pay for all the visits they go out and all the vet certificates they've gotta review and all this stuff. You can't just say, "Okay, pigs and chickens are allowed. That's the reason we banned them in the first place." It's because it's a huge administrative nightmare. But if you're gonna, in the same token, if you're gonna ban them, you gotta ban them, and it's gotta be clear. So, all I desire to do is to make what is currently the law and has been the law for some time clear to the extent that the people who are in charge of enforcing it know, and the people who are able to live in the city, know.
Is there a way, the way that you've written this, that we can pull swine out, at least from a temporary perspective, until we can more clearly define? 'Cause I know that, I know the pigs are the sticking point for a couple people on council. Is there a way that we can pull that out while leaving in the poultry?
Sure. Anything can be done. I mean, it had to be redone, obviously, but, yes.
And is that something that council would be interested in entertaining? At least till we can firm up a way to define Harold, or whatever his name is, the pig, Hampton, the pig, from bacon?
Here, I'll bet, I'll bet you that. You all, at the last meeting, sort of asked me to put together some options, and I had Erica do some, a pretty good amount of research on what other cities do, and then I took, I took what she did and kinda boiled it down, if you will, to some of the more common options. I really think what you're looking at in terms of a pig, I'll say it again, you can't just say, "Okay, pigs are allowed." You're gonna have to have restrictions on breed. You're gonna have to have these things spayed and neutered. You're gonna have them, have them checked annually. They're gonna have to come back for a license annually. They're gonna have to have their tusks sheared, if they have tusks. You're gonna have to have distance restrictions. You're gonna have to have cleanliness restrictions.
But you have those, except for the tusks, you have those restrictions in place right now for dogs and cats. You even have breeds, insofar, it has to be a domesticated dog and not a wolf. I mean, I think it's overstating, I think, with all due respect, Mr. Hartley, you overstated it when you said that all you're doing is cleaning this up. There's a reason why Hampton and the other, oh, well, Wilbur. There's a reason why Hampton and Wilbur are, you know, in the city limits right now. It's because under the current letter of the ordinance, that's allowed. I mean, they are considered to be companion animals under that ordinance, as it's currently written. It's only with the change of classifying pigs only as livestock that they're made illegal.
But then, but at same argument, so are sheep and goats and horses and cows.
But I think you make, I think you make an exception, in my mind. The reason I voted against it is that there's been pot-bellied pigs and pigs as pets around for a while, and they are specific, seem to be specific breeds that people have as companion animals. It's different than using chickens as your personal livestock, either for meat or eggs in your backyard coop. This is about individual, and I don't know how many pigs we're talking about in the city limits. I mean, pot-bellied pigs.
We probably get.
Minotaur hampsters.
I'd say somewhere between 10 to 15 a year. That's just, that's just an estimate, but.
I mean, I don't, we don't have North Carolina-style huge, you know, 10,000 pigs under one roof farming operation. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about one or two, one pig a household. So, I just think it was just too broad a stroke.
Well, I would urge the council that this issue is not gonna go away. So, whatever form that you all would like to see it in, again, I go back to, if you all don't wanna pass this, then, you know, I'll work with whoever wants to propose an alternate ordinance.
Can we still, can we still take a second?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Can we still accept a second of the motion?
Sure.
Andrew.
Okay, Connie, your motion still standing?
I think they had some more discussion, Mayor. Yes, my motion.
It does, and we have a second to your motion.
Thank you.
Could we take a roll call vote, please?
We have discussion.
You want to discuss some more? Okay, I'm sorry.
We talked about this at a prior meeting, but, you know, I understand the issues regarding the cleanliness of whatever animals, but the ordinance doesn't address, and I know you all have issues with this, the number of, like, cats that a household can have. And that's been a big issue in the city of Georgetown. This almost seems like the perfect time to add it on top of this particular ordinance. You know, you think having five cats might be a lot, or 10, like, cats, or 20 cats. There's, I've seen 40 or 50 cats in one household. You're talking about a filthy environment. I mean, there's all kinds of things I don't even wanna describe going on. And I guess I'd like to, I'd like to try. I don't wanna. I'd like to end this conversation.
Yeah.
Andrew, I'd like, is there a way that you could incorporate some language into this ordinance that would address that issue? I mean, you know, if we're gonna talk about environmental issues, that's clearly a health and environmental issue.
I can address whatever you all want me to address. I, this was brought to me as a very specific problem, so I presented a very specific solution. It's up to you all whether you wanna handle it piece by piece. I can bring back 10 ordinances, or I can bring back one. It's the same amount of trouble to me. I, it doesn't.
It didn't come out right, did it, Andrew?
It all relates to the same subject.
I guess my, my immediate reaction after discussing this more is, I think they need more direction. And I think we need to support them in their efforts to eliminate a mass of problems. Now, I would support coming back to this and readdressing the swine issue. But I guess my reaction tonight is, I would like to go on and vote this in and then address the cat issue, address the swine issue, if we wanna tighten that at a later date. But I think it's important that we, that we... Um, but I think it's important that we, that we work with Animal Control to go on and give them clear direction and give them the tools that they need to, to enforce the ordinance, really, that are already on the books.
Like he pointed out, you know, it's, it's there, but there's no teeth in it.
Right, and tha, and that's kinda why I'm...
You violated the ordinance. So what? Now what?
Right. So, I, I would be inclined, I know Kelly's already seconded it, but I would be inclined to go on and support this in, in an effort to, you know, come back and address the other issues, cause like you say, they're very, and, and cats and pigs really are probably just two more things of twenty other ones that we could address i- in an ordinance like this to begin with.
I gotta, I gotta agree, David. There's lots of stuff that could be done. But like I said, the, the issue was presented to me, and in, not just once, not just twice, but in every council meeting I've had since I've been the city attorney. So, I can't, that's, I had to bring to you an ordinance that reflects that problem. Cats and dogs have not been brought up a- as an issue. They, they can be fixed, but I would personally hate to see you not consider this ordinance simply because you think there are other things to add, because if that's the case, we could do that for a long time.
Yeah.
And I, I will, I, I represent to you that if you wanna bring a, a cats ordinance, I'll have it to you on the table at the July first, the first July meeting.
Hey, I'm receptive.
I, you know, I can't vote for this because Hampton's gonna be taken away from its owner. I understand it needs, it needs to be addressed and detailed, so, so they can do their job and do, and, and whatever it's gonna be, whether we say yes or no, you know what it is. But I can't vote on it tonight, because if we vote on to pass, to, to pass it, then Hampton's gonna be taken away from his owner in ten days or, or whatever. Is that not correct?
Hampton will have some time to find a new home, but yes.
Well, you know, I mean, I, and then I know I'm putting myself in the place of, because I have a dog, but I'm thinking, you know, maybe y'all, we, don't like my breed and my dog, and so you're gonna pass an ordinance to say, and I know you're saying domesticated versus not domesticated, but then, okay, you're gonna pass an ordinance, ten days, you're gonna take my dog away from me? I mean, I don't know, maybe I have more compassion for the pig than I should, but, you know, I just, I don't, it's a person's pet regardless whether it fits, it fits in the perfect little synopsis here, because we haven't cleaned up our ordinance. It's not their fault, and they're gonna get their animal taken away from them. So, I would vote no for, I'm gonna vote no for it, and would rather say, okay, I'll volunteer to help clean it up and work on it in the next couple of weeks, help clean it up, so it's a better ordinance, so somebody don't get their pet taken away from them.
By that, by that same token, you've got, you've got thirty thousand residents of the city who, most of whom don't have pigs and chickens, and read an ordinance that, that the normal person would read and say, okay, I have a right to live in my neighborhood with no livestock. But by virtue of the fact that there's this little tweak, that obviously, I, I don't think was intended, they have to live with pickin', pigs and chickens next door with no rules and restrictions as far as whether they, you know, the cleanliness and things like that. And, and if they're a nuisance, Animal Control lacks the ability to go in there and say, you cannot have this pig on your property. So...
What we, excuse me, what we normally do now, whenever an issue comes up, we, we go in, the ten days is great. We pretty much already give two weeks. That's what, that's kinda just a rule of thumb, I guess. Um, we'll give two weeks, ask them to get rid of it. If they don't, then we go to the county attorney's office, and it's, it's more of a drawn-out process. I think what he's offering is more of a simplified solution. I mean, I think it would, it helps out a lot.
In other words, the county attorney has to take somebody to court in order to get rid of the pig. And that's a major, and the courts don't like that.
Oh, no.
They're coming, when you come, when you come in front of the district judge, the judge, I'm here because so-and-so has a pig. They've just had twenty, you know, meth cases in front of them. They're not happy campers.
Okay.
Got a first? We have a second?
We have first and a second, so let's have a roll call vote.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, you can.
Maybe, maybe this is irrelevant, but for some reason, I keep thinking, at some point, we gotta stop acting like a small town, cause we're not a small town anymore, and we're gonna grow to fifty or sixty thousand people, so we're not a small town.
We're still an agricultural-based community. Even though we do have industry now, we still have our agricultural roots.
Absolutely. Right, outside the city limit.
But I, I don't, I mean, this isn't about agriculture. I mean, I don't want chickens in the city limits. I certainly don't want two or three pigs in everybody's backyard in a smokehouse where people put bacon after, after they slaughter the pig. We're talking about, I think, a domesticated breed that was specifically bred in the last few decade, I mean, in the last fifty years, who knows how long, to be a companion pet house animal. In the same way that we don't allow wolves, but we let chihuahuas in the city limits, make the difference between Hamsters and Berkshires, and, and a little Vietnamese, you know, pot-bellied pig and a micromaniac. I mean, I, I think it's just trying to fit the law, and if this thing fails tonight, I would like to turn around, change that, tweak that livestock definition and companion animal definition to include those breeds of pigs, and go from there. But no, I don't, I don't want chick, you know, big chicken houses and big warehouses of chickens in the city limits.
And I would say the same thing. Even if this passes tonight, I would still support us more clearly defining the, the swine.
Are you, are you bypassing pigs to, when you say swine?
I don't know. Tomato, tomato.
What's the difference between a pig and a swine?
I don't know. I grew up in Georgetown.
Well, you come here, you're no.
I'm having pigs in my yard.
Everybody here did.
Well, there was this, no, I'm just...
Mr. Lesby.
I'll say no, cause I'm receptive to some modifications.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sains.
No.
Mr. Singer.
No.
Mrs. Tackett.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Four yeses and three no's.
Four and three. We passed something tonight. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. All right. Mr. Engineer. Recommendation for Traffic Committee concerning Handicapped Reserve Parking. I know you've done well on this one.
Well, a couple meetings ago, um, you all asked us to address this in Traffic Committee. Um, the letter attached to your packets includes all of the Traffic Committee minutes that I have regarding this issue, about the individual's handicap spot on North Court Street. And the recommendations at the bottom of the, the minutes, recommendation number one, to deny the request to designate the handicapped parking stall on North Court Street to a specific individual. Number two, remove all designated signage citywide that refers to specific addresses and/or individuals. And the third would be, allow the existing permit parking near the college to remain until a traffic ordinance, including a comprehensive parking policy, is approved. Those are our recommendations.
I'll, I'll add to that, cause I, you know, I attended the Traffic Committee, and I, I was the one that, that made the recommendation to the committee that, I believe I sent an email to you all on this, but the idea is that the city cannot take what is dedicated to the entire public, that is, public streets, and carve out a piece of that and say to a particular homeowner, this is yours. And not just this is yours, but this is yours really in perpetuity until, until we, the council or whoever, said so. That's, that's doing something to, for the benefit of one person, to the exclusion of all others, and the Constitution prohibits that. Now, you ask, well, why is parking permit different? Parking permits and permitted parking is done pursuant to a comprehensive ordinance, which we hope to pass very soon, that takes into consideration a multitude of factors, takes into consideration the benefit and the effect on the public as a whole, on traffic flows, on the public purpose, and it says, we wanna dedicate this particular street or this particular area to parking for residents of that area. Whether it's college, whether it's a, an area that is primarily dedicated to residence or industry, that is different than somebody on a whim saying, this is your parking place. And I said in my email that I could find no instance of the council or the Traffic Committee ever approving these signs. I think some of the signs are homemade. Um, some of the signs are misspelled. Um, they are all, all to different standards, but I can find no evidence of the council or the committee ever approving the placement of these signs. So, they're done, one, in violation of, in my opinion, the Constitution, and two, in violation of basic rules of city council business. Um, if the city's practice is to approve all signs for the Traffic Committee, then these were done without that as well. So, again, my recommendation is, signs that are dedicated to particular addresses, whether they're handicapped or not handicapped, the designation of the address be taken off. If they're a handicap sign, they're kept as such. Uh, you know, we could survey the homeowners to find out if that is still necessary. But the next step would be to adopt comprehensive traffic ordinance, which would address parking issues. People can apply for parking permits. Uh, you know, a neighborhood could, a neighborhood could say, this particular street has no access, no parking places. We'd like to apply for parking permits. It would be given the full consideration of the Traffic Committee and of the council, and it would be done with full approval. So, anything else, anything short of that is arbitrary. And so, that's why I recommend that those signs be taken down.
Andrew, I'll add to what you just said. I guess I've been involved with city council for twenty years, and, and I don't ever remember the council voting on a specific person's private parking, handicapped parking space. And I, I know some exist, and I think I was a bit surprised to see how many were out there. But, um, I don't recall us ever voting on any specifically.
The only one I ever remember was there, was there one, Estor?
Estor Court.
Estor Court, we did vote on that. That was brought to the council for, for that, on Estor Court. But that's the only one I can remember.
Yeah, the, the times that I do remember voting on them, cause people have come to us and made the request, and we said, okay, we'll grant a handicap space, but it's open to anybody that's handicapped that can park there.
And that's consistent with state law.
Okay.
Well, all those places now that have been designated with an address, is there any way checking to see if those were approved?
It, well, I mean, as far as the ones that were approved for handicap, we could check, we could cross-reference it. I mean, by my, we, we wanna change those back to just general handicap spots. So, I mean, whether the councils approve that or not, um...
Do you need a motion in regard?
This is a request from the, from the Traffic Committee, and...
I'll make the motion.
They got a tough job.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Good job, Cass. Good job.
We hope to, we hope to bring a, a comprehensive traffic ordinance back to the Traffic Committee very soon and to you guys, right after that.
Okay, this finance department.
Nope.
Budget municipal orders.
Yes. Uh, the first municipal order that Tracy will read is regarding selection of new accounting software, which you all did put in the budget for twelve thirteen. Um, so we've finally been able to go through that RFP process. We had three companies, Software Solutions, United Systems, and Springbrook, that responded, and we allowed all three to do demonstrations. So, based on cost and technology platforms and what we felt was most suitable, we are recommending Software Solutions.
An order approving the purchase of financial accounting software suite, software maintenance, and virtual data center services from Software Solutions and Go Concepts, and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the city of Georgetown issued a request for proposals for government financial accounting software, and whereas the purchase of financial accounting software was budgeted in the 2012-2013 budget, and whereas Software Solutions was determined to be the most suitable software suite for the city of Georgetown based on overall product quality and cost, and Software Solutions uses Go Concepts for hosting a virtual data center. And whereas the one-time licensing cost for the software are seventy-four thousand nine hundred and one dollars, and the annual maintenance, support, and hosting services cost is twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of financial accounting software, software maintenance, and virtual data center services for Software Solutions and Go Concepts, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Any discussion?
This gets rid of what is currently being used, which is really owed and equated.
Yes, very. I was quite surprised when I came and, and saw our system. I was like, oh, wow.
That's all a document. I'm in motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Motion second. Any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Very good. Municipal order, Properties Incorporated Renewal, KLC.
And unless there's any questions from you all about these, I'll just let Tracy read through them, but basically, we do have all of our insurance renewals here. I believe Megan wrote up a memo on the workers' comp, and I went through and reviewed what was in next year's budget compared to the, um, property liability and crime premiums. We were off about eight hundred dollars, so we were pretty close.
What'd you think?
Eight hundred dollars, and, and I just, it was really the same budget as last year, so we must've come in under budget last year.
An order accepting the property insurance renewal proposal of Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for the fiscal year 2014, whereas the finance director and the city attorney are recommending renewal of the policy with Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for an annual premium of forty-two thousand six hundred and nine dollars effective July first, 2013, through July first, 2014. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the insurance renewal for property coverage, a copy of which is attached and incorporated herein and by reference, is approved, and that the mayor is authorized to sign the same.
Motion?
So, the...
Second. Any discussion?
On the, um, on all these policies, I see they're all with KLC. Have we done, in the past, there's been, you know, some bidding out by the age and...
My understanding, I wasn't here last year, but my understanding is these were all bid out last year with the option to renew for two additional years. So, I think that's how it was bid last year. So, we were, this is our second year renewal. We would have the option for one more year.
Any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Read on, Ms. Tracy.
An order accepting the liability insurance renewal proposal of Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for fiscal year 2014, whereas the finance director and the city attorney are recommending renewal of the policy with Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for an annual premium of two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars effective July first, 2013, through July first, 2014. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the insurance renewal for liability coverage, a copy of which is attached and incorporated herein by reference, is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign the same.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion. I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
An order accepting the crime insurance renewal proposal of Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for fiscal year 2014, whereas the finance director and the city attorney are recommending renewal of the policy with Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for an annual premium of one-thousand-sixty-one effective July first, 2013, through July first, 2014. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the insurance renewal for crime coverage, a copy of which is attached and incorporated herein and by reference, is approved, and that the mayor is authorized to sign the same.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
An order accepting the workers' compensation insurance renewal proposal of Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for the fiscal year 2014, whereas the director of human resources and the city attorney are recommending renewal of the policy with Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for an annual premium of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars effective July first, 2013, through July first, 2014. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the insurance renewal for workers' compensation coverage, a copy of which is attached and incorporated herein by reference, is approved, and that the mayor is authorized to sign the same.
Motion?
Motion, or Ms. Tackett?
Second.
With one question. What's the state...
What's the state, what's the savings from last year?
I think it was around $50,000. I think it was in Megan's memo.
That's, that's very good.
And, and looking, looking good, too. Our workers are doing a good job. They really are.
This is our fifth year in relationship with KLC and insurance services, and I think it just speaks to how good a job you, the administration's doing and, um, our personnel director and our finance director are doing as far as holding down cost on workers' comp. So thanks, and the directors. It's good work.
Any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, did it really make any difference that we passed all this for next year without a budget?
No, I don't think so.
Well, the, the property liability and crime budget is the same.
Okay.
So it was the same anyway.
And the workers' comp is lower.
Workers' comp, I think we...
Workers' comp is lower.
Probably decreased.
And if we, and if we get to July 1st, we'll just be using last year's budgets.
Right.
Workers' comp will be actually lower for what we budgeted.
Right.
This year, so.
We're covered.
Save it, we got more money in there. Remember that when you all worked on this this week.
Fifty thou, fifty thousand.
We did, I think, lower the workers' comp, uh, budget to $250,000 in the proposed budget already, so we're expecting it to be...
Thank you, Stace. Okay, fire department, approve them to give surplus air compression to stamping ground, and you have a letter from Chief Bruin, uh, from Billy McIntosh, the, the fire chief at, at stamping ground.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, Chief McIntosh expressed interest. I said, "It's totally up to this council. You already surplussed it." We could, you know, our idea was to try to sell it on the internet, but it's totally up to you. I told him I would bring it to you.
I think it's great that we're able to help another fire department within our county.
It's a 20-year-old plus system, but, I mean, it would still be good for a smaller fire department.
What did, what did you say you thought it might bring?
I was, I was hoping if we did sell it to get $3,700. That's how much we had in the grant. The grant was $37,000, and we had to pay 10% of the grant. So if we'd got $3,700, they would've, we'd have been free and clear on our new system. And that's the way I thought. I don't know, have any idea, I never got a, you know, an estimate of what it might bring. It could bring more, it could bring less. My hope was to get $3,700.
I think it's worth $3,700 in goodwill, to be honest with you. I, I would support this. I actually ran into someone from their fire department who asked me about it, and told them I'd contact the chief as well, so...
Well, like I said, they, they, uh, yeah, Brad did contact me. They had asked, and I told Chief McIntosh, "Get a letter, and I would bring it to you for him."
So when the, when alarm rings in the stamping ground, I mean, we send one of our trucks, I mean, if it's a, if it's a major...
Certain areas, if it's a structural fire, yes.
So, I mean, we're already, you know, working with them, and when the bell rings, we're kind of a submerged department.
Any, any alarm in stamping ground, all may, it gets the county. If it's a structural fire, we'll get one of ours.
Absolutely.
Motion, Mayor.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mayor, council.
I think what you did is a good thing. Very much so. Police update, Robert. Captain Swanakin, I'm sorry.
Chief Posse sends his regard. He's under the weather this evening.
That's the update?
That's the update.
All right.
That's a horrible update.
I gotta go.
That's a good one, I say.
No, I think that he passed out to the council, that he's, do they still get the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, outside of that, uh, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that pretty well sums up our month. We're pretty busy. Uh, the fireworks complaints have already started to come in.
Already cooled off.
Yeah, the new ordinance does give us some teeth, and we appreciate that very much. Um, we're obviously getting the word out to the public right now. Our goal is to educate them that, uh, there can be some repercussions if they don't comply, so that's where we're at.
Well, we'll have to at least go through one, start seeing the results.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, uh...
We're there?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I think number 12, we've already answered.
Yes, sir.
All right, to yours that, what?
Not to my satisfaction.
Okay, okay. I'll say it correct.
All right, before we get to council...
To my satisfaction.
Before we get to council comments.
I'd like to, I'd like to request, and I apologize if this just came up, I'd like to request that go into executive session again, um, again, discussing the Sims Road landfill. I got the, I got the language if anybody wants to make the motion.
I'll make a motion if you read it.
She's right here.
A motion to enter, I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810 B to deliberate future acquisition of real property at the Sims Road landfill.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll be going into executive session.
All right. You're sitting.
And...
Comes from four sources. Four. The largest of those are occupational acts, um, insurance premiums, real estate.
I, I guess I can, I can tell you as public knowledge, we got, uh, I think, 1.3 million, uh, check for, uh, for May today.
Net profit?
No, no.
No, occupation.
Occupational.
Biggest month we've had yet.
And, and, uh, uh...
Five years?
The judge told me that, uh, the check is in the commissioner's office at 1.3 from Toyota.
I thought she was gonna say in the mail. I was like, "Good."
No, it's, it's over there, so...
That's awesome.
So this is, this is, this is good news. This is what I was basing things on. I, I want you to be concerned about what's down the road. We all, we all have to be. But I also want you to know things are going to be better. We're not operating on, when Karen had to make those awful decisions, and you folks were on the council then. I, I don't want to ever see those days. I, I didn't, and, uh, I, I just don't foresee them. I think a, a big lesson was learned by all, and I hope we can say goodbye to those days forever.
Hey, can I, I'm sorry. You finished, Mayor? I didn't interrupt you.
I am finished.
I want to, uh, make a quick comment that interest rates are starting to creep up. If you've been listening to the news or watching it here lately, um, something we need to think about.
You're supposed to do, Mr. Baker.
That's right.
Y'all loan more money when the interest is higher.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Oh, there's a mo, we got a motion.
Yeah. Motion?
I would, I would tell you, I thought we had that already.
We have it.
You do?
You got it.
I would tell you, it was not a pleasure spending my 51st wedding anniversary with you guys.
Congratulations.